The common council to order for its March meeting. Would everyone still please rise and for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the clerk, conduct the roll call, please.
Heidi.
Here.
Clinker.
Here.
Nargie.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Brown.
Alders Meyer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Stamm.
Here.
Coramford.
I would accept a motion to accept and approve the meeting, the minutes of the February 1st common council meeting. Yes, ma'am.
I move the minutes be approved as communicated.
Mr. Brown, thank you. Any questions or comments about those minutes? There being none, would the clerk conduct a roll call vote, please?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alders Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Minutes approved.
Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file in the city clerk's office.
Fleet maintenance monthly January, water works department monthly January, water pollution control department monthly January, and the 2015 annual report, fire department 2015 annual report.
All of those reports are available for your examination in the clerk's office during business hours. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2016 dash zero two, an ordinance to amend, amended ordinance 2015 dash twenty seven, and ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2016, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments.
Ms. Williamson.
I move for passage of ordinance 2016 dash oh two on-
Ms. Downing.
Second.
Any discussion or comments or questions by members of the common council? Members of the audience wish to address this particular? Any questions by anyone in the audience? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash zero two on second and final reading.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alders Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passed and safe to zero.
Thank you. Ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2016 dash zero four, an ordinance amending section 2.01.020, the Lafayette municipal code to change the time of the regular common council meetings.
Mr. Heidi. I move to hear ordinance number 2016 dash oh four. Mr. Clinker.
Second.
Discussion or comments by members of the common council? Yes, sir.
Yes, when I suggested this, this kind of puts everything in line with our caucus and other meetings, and it doesn't hold our personnel over, so it kind of moves everything up, so they're not sitting in their offices and so on, waiting for the meetings, and I think it keeps us in line, same time with caucus, same time with some of the county meetings that we all attend to, so.
Any other comments? Members of the audience wish to address this? Yes, sir.
Lloyd Wells, 3717 Rawlings Drive. What is the new time?
Six thirty.
All I need to know.
Starting in May. After another reading.
Perry Barbie, 3700 Rutherford Avenue. In October, I think we passed, the council passed the, for the agenda for the, for the upcoming 2016 calendar, and it wouldn't be fair for the citizens of our great city if we change it any matter of the year. So, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying we should wait until 2017. Beverly, give the citizen fair enough time for them to come. Thank you.
I would guess that there will be ample notification-
It will take effect until May, because it has to have period.
It doesn't start till May, and so I would hope that you take care of that.
There will be plenty of media coverage, yeah.
Any other comments by members of the audience? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash zero four on first reading?
Mr. Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alders Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
We're going to pass this eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016 dash fifteen, or oh five, excuse me.
An ordinance for appropriation of local option highway user tax funds, county wheel tax fund number 249.
Nargie.
I move that we hear ordinance 2016 dash oh five.
Mr. Reynolds.
A second.
Any questions or comments by the common council? Mayor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, the ordinance before you, if you recall, most of you have been here close to the entire time, when the wheel tax was first put into place in Tippecanoe County, we came to the council at that time and reached an agreement that every year, as opposed to putting this money in the general budget that we passed during budget season, that we would bring it as a separate ordinance to the council in the hopes that it would create greater transparency for the council and also greater transparency for our citizens, it wouldn't get lost in that overall budget process, so they could see specifically where those wheel tax dollars went to and what roads would actually be paved with that on an annual basis. And so, it's a continuation of that process that we started, I think it has served us well over the last several years. You have the list in front of you of the roads that will be paved, we do have the bids back in for the asphalt, so we have a pretty good idea where we'll end up, barring any unforeseen circumstances, once you begin to mill the roads and to do some of those things that are required with drainage. So, we'd appreciate your support on this, it does require two readings, but we started in plenty of time, so we'll read it this month and we'll read it next month, and hopefully the weather will cooperate and we'll start getting the roads paved.
Any other comments by members of the audience, or any questions by the common council of the mayor?
Just a question of the mayor. He did that on purpose.
No, I did not.
No, it's what, are we going to get in, since oil prices are down, are we going to get any kind of break on the asphalt?
The asphalt bids weren't bad, I mean, they're not so good, it's going to save us a lot of money. The biggest opportunity that we'll have, as you know, the legislature, the senate and the house are trying to reconcile a bill in conference committee right now that would appropriate some additional road funding to local communities that could be used to pave a significant number of roads and be used on other large projects that we'll have. So, that would be the greatest opportunity that we'd have to do significantly more road work in the community is the passage of that bill, so that's probably where you ought to push for, because that's what we need to happen.
All right.
All right.
Any questions or comments by members of the audience? Once again, the common council, any questions? The clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash five.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alders Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
We're going to pass this eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2016 dash fifteen, or oh five, excuse me.
An ordinance for appropriation of local option highway user tax funds, county wheel tax fund number 249.
Nargie.
I move that we hear ordinance 2016 dash oh five.
Mr. Reynolds.
A second.
Any questions or comments by the common council? Mayor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, the ordinance before you, if you recall, most of you have been here close to the entire time, when the wheel tax was first put into place in Tippecanoe County, we came to the council at that time and reached an agreement that every year, as opposed to putting this money in the general budget that we passed during budget season, that we would bring it as a separate ordinance to the council in the hopes that it would create greater transparency for the council and also greater transparency for our citizens, it wouldn't get lost in that overall budget process, so they could see specifically where those wheel tax dollars went to and what roads would actually be paved with that on an annual basis. And so, it's a continuation of that process that we started, I think it has served us well over the last several years. You have the list in front of you of the roads that will be paved, we do have the bids back in for the asphalt, so we have a pretty good idea where we'll end up, barring any unforeseen circumstances, once you begin to mill the roads and to do some of those things that are required with drainage. So, we'd appreciate your support on this, it does require two readings, but we started in plenty of time, so we'll read it this month and we'll read it next month, and hopefully the weather will cooperate and we'll start getting the roads paved.
Any other comments by members of the audience, or any questions by the common council of the mayor?
Just a question of the mayor. He did that on purpose.
No, I did not.
No, it's what, are we going to get in, since oil prices are down, are we going to get any kind of break on the asphalt?
The asphalt bids weren't bad, I mean, they're not so good, it's going to save us a lot of money. The biggest opportunity that we'll have, as you know, the legislature, the senate and the house are trying to reconcile a bill in conference committee right now that would appropriate some additional road funding to local communities that could be used to pave a significant number of roads and be used on other large projects that we'll have. So, that would be the greatest opportunity that we'd have to do significantly more road work in the community is the passage of that bill, so that's probably where you ought to push for, because that's what we need to happen.
All right.
All right.
Any questions or comments by members of the audience? Once again, the common council, any questions? The clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash five.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alders Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Resolution 2016 dash five.
A resolution to amend the comprehensive plan for the Tippecanoe County to include an update of the multi-hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
I move we hear an approved resolution 2016 dash zero five.
Ms. Downing.
Second.
Questions and comments by members of the common council?
Mr. Campbell, I'll give a little brief explanation of this. It comes out of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 that required agencies to develop mitigation plans for both natural and man-made disasters, which Tippecanoe County and all the area plan commission and all the governmental entities that are part of that adopted in 2006. The requirement for continued opportunity to get assistance with natural or man-made disasters requires an updating of that plan, so the area plan commission conducted that process, and they've had public hearings, and then the plan gets sent to FEMA to see if it's acceptable to them, and it came back, and they were fine with it, so the area plan commission voted on it in the February meeting unanimously, adopted it, and since we're a member agency of the area plan, it requires adoption by all of the jurisdictions, which includes Lafayette, West Lafayette, Tippecanoe County, Dayton, Shadland, and so that's what it is. It allows us to apply for grants, apply for disaster aid, flood, tornado, those are natural, could be a, you know, big fire that's man-made that causes problems, but anyhow, that's where we're required, this is the updated plan, the 2015 plan that's being offered as part of this resolution for adoption by the city of Lafayette.
Any questions of Mr. Chasney? There being none, members of the audience, any questions? Once again, the council, anything? Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on resolution 2016 dash five?
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Alders Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees? There being none, reports of special committees? There being none, reports by the mayor? Miscellaneous and new business, there's a question here about warrants and checks. Mr. Clary.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a list of outstanding checks that we'd like to have documented in the city council minutes that we will post back to our funds. Those checks are two years, and at the end of 2015, we're ready to be back into the fund, so we ask for your approval and documentation in the minutes to-
They represent how much money?
The total is $10,326.48.
Any questions of Mr. Clary?
Just one. Now, where do these checks go from, these uncashed checks or?
Right, uncashed checks that are back from 2013 and before. Indiana code allows governmental entities to receive back those checks that have not been cashed out of two years.
Is there any chance for a really large pizza party?
That could be in the budget.
Mr. Heidi?
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Clary. Members of the audience have any questions of Mr. Clary? Yes, sir. Or yes, ma'am. Could you step forward, please, and give us your name and address?
My name is Cheryl Chapman, 1408 Howell Street, and I just wanted to say, since there was a chuckle up here, if you're going to have a pizza party, can all the public be invited?
Of course!
Thank you.
Why should we be? Thank you. Yes, sir. Nope. Department head updates. Anything going there? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Claudine Lothman, Lafayette Parks and Recreation. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm very pleased this evening to stand before you and provide you with an update on our area. As an overview, the Parks and Recreation Department manages over 20 properties and over 600 acres of land, which includes the following: three family aquatic centers, one regional park, which is Colombian Park, seven community parks, nine neighborhood parks, a linear park trail system, a series of parks along the Wabash River, community recreation center, which is McAllister Center, and a zoo. As a department, we have 32 full-time employees, several part-time year-round staff persons, and rely on additional 175 seasonal employees to accommodate our busy summer season. Over the past few years, many noticeable changes have occurred within our department, including changes in leadership, organizational culture, and organizational structure. As we look to the future, we anticipate implementing additional changes as the city's needs grow and as our department grows. These changes will occur not only within our physical facilities, but also with our staff in the way of professional development, training, and organizational ownership. Since our last report, I have several project updates for you. Subaru South Tip Park was completed and dedicated. Sterling Heights, the construction started in the fall of 2015, and we're planning a late spring dedication this year. McAllister Park, the former municipal golf course site, we've partnered with the Wabash River Enhancement Corporation and the firm Rundell, Ernst, Berger &amp; Associates to conduct a reuse study for the North Reach area. The final report is expected next month. At the zoo, the Animal House Kitchen was completely renovated through a gift from the Friends of Colombian Park Zoo. The Kiwanis Club generously sponsored the new outdoor education station, which is an outdoor education presentation area. In addition, 17 large commercial planners were added through the generosity of a donor. The Rush Pavilion and Boathouse received a fresh coat of paint and deck stain. 20 new hanging baskets were installed on the veranda of Rush Pavilion, and late in the year last year, several new tables and chairs reflecting the Victorian era were purchased for installation this coming spring. The tables and chairs were made possible through the generosity of a donor as well. The basketball courts at Centennial and Armstrong were resurfaced, along with the roller hockey court at Shamrock Park. New striping was added to the existing tennis courts at McCaw Park to create a total of eight new pickleball courts to accommodate the growth of pickleball in our community. At McAllister Recreation Center, new rubber flooring was installed in half of the cardio area, and new wall mirrors were installed in the freeway area. Memorial Island was renovated through a successful partnership with SIA and numerous donors. Several veterans' memorials previously scattered throughout the city were relocated to the island, and a new granite monument honoring the Gold Star families was commissioned and installed on the island. Construction was completed in late May, and a dedication event coincided with the annual Memorial Day celebration. Many families of fallen local veterans were in attendance, along with Herschel Woody Williams, who is the last surviving Medal of Honor recipient from the Battle of Iwo Jima. Personnel updates include the McAllister Recreation Center management team restructuring to reflect a more linear chain of command with a manager, assistant manager, and a program coordinator position. In the maintenance area, we successfully combined two work departments into one central team. Within the central team, we have recently created four specialized work teams in the areas of building construction, mowing and snow removal, aquatics and equipment, and landscaping, which will improve efficiency and effectiveness. In addition, the urban forestry position was relocated to the engineering department late last summer, and the natural resources coordinator position was reviewed, and the responsibilities were modified to fit the department's needs, and the position was retitled to natural resources and recreation planner. Professional development, we've had various staff members engage in several opportunities over the past year, including attendance at Indiana Park and Recreation Association's annual conference, a variety of management training seminars, and safety training seminars. In addition, three of our staff members successfully attained certification as certified playground safety inspectors, bringing our total certification to six. Three of our staff members attained certification as aquatic facility operators, five staff members attained certification as certified pool operators, and nine staff members attained certification as pesticide applicators. Two zoo staff members attended a management course offered through the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. A total of seven zoo staff members attended online courses through the San Diego Zoo Global Academy, which included webinars on such topics as safety, conservation, interpretation, customer service, and a variety of animal-related topics such as nutrition, handling, and behavior. Now, for the exciting part, which are impact numbers for 2015. A total of 3,989 daily fitness passes were sold at McAllister Recreation Center. 2,450 employees and/or their family members utilized the fitness area at McAllister, which is a 76% increase in usage over 2014. That's very dramatic. On average, 163 kids attended summer camp at McAllister each day, and over 7,200 annual flowers, accent plants, and perennial plants were planted in our parks and other city locations. 38,017 individuals of all ages participated in the zoo's education programs. 36,399 riders rode the Colombian Park Express train ride, and volunteers logged on 14,109 hours at the zoo. Program updates, the park department continues to provide and facilitate a variety of programs for a variety of audiences. Just a sampling of these offerings include the following: adoptive spots, roller hockey, basketball, disc golf, baseball, softball, zumba fitness, dance, art, slim lessons, junior counselor and zoo team programs, and yoga, among others. We have begun to successfully expand the park department's volunteer program. The volunteer program at the zoo is highly successful and has been used as a model for the entire department. Last summer, we continued our partnership with the YMCA Trail Blazers Group. These pre-teen and teen participants in Camp Straight Arrow were led by former mayor youth council participant Mason Fisher. Approximately 15 kids met our staff once weekly during the summer to beautify our park facilities. In exchange for their hard work, the kids received a courtesy pass to one of our amenities each week as well. Our popular Art in the Park music and art series will continue on a regular basis at Memorial Island in Colombian Park this summer. Our fitness series, Walking Towards Wellness, has also been successful and will also begin in late May for another summer session of weekly walks. Tails on the Trails will again encourage dog owners and their dogs to enjoy our trails during the cooler fall weather. Now, to highlight some of our public and private partnerships. In early 2015, the Parks Department began discussions with MKE Sports regarding a partnership to bring collegiate baseball team to play in Loeb Stadium. In late 2005, a successful partnership was announced, and the public was invited to help name the team. The Aviators was selected from a long list of suggestions. Their first game in Loeb Stadium is slated to take place on June 1st, and I'd like to extend an invitation to each and every one of you to attend that first game. The zoo also embarked on an important conservation partnership with Purdue University and the Indiana Department of Natural Resources to house three juvenile eastern hellbenders and maintain them for future release in the wild. Hellbenders are the largest salamanders in North America and are fully aquatic, they are considered endangered in Indiana. The zoo held a Help the Hellbenders special event last summer in collaboration with both Purdue and the DNR to raise awareness for this interesting amphibian. In closing, the Parks Department continues to embrace numerous public and private partnerships for both short-term and long-term goals. From the Lafayette Park Foundation, to Friends of the Zoo, to Tree Lafayette, dozens of organizations have partnered with our department to ensure its success and commitment to improving the quality of life for all residents of Greater Lafayette. We look forward to continuing these partnerships in the future to provide many more fun and recreational opportunities in our community. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Sir?
In an attempt to stay hip with my kids, what is pickleball?
Pickleball is very similar to tennis, but it's played with a paddle and a small plastic ball, and it's played on a court smaller than tennis, so it's not, you don't have to run quite as much, and it is very popular with older individuals as well as younger individuals, because it's not as vigorous play as tennis. Any other questions?
What about the Forest Woods?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything going on with that?
We do have a committed volunteer group from Purdue University, spearheaded by a retired forestry professor, that is out there clearing invasives, so there's many, many invasive species, and his estimate, it will take him another two or three years, even with his group help, to clear those invasives before we can get in there and start doing design and really tackling that property. If you drive by, you will actually see their progress, it's pretty significant, just from the perimeter.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one. With a 76% increase in utilization of the fitness center, how is the equipment holding up?
The equipment is holding up just fine, and we really anticipate, or we are extrapolating the data to show that the wellness program within the city of Lafayette with the employees is really kind of encouraging our employees and their families to utilize the equipment. So, so far, so good, and those individuals are doing a variety of things, and we're getting ready to hopefully implement a new, more computerized fitness program, which is kind of the going trend, where you can come to the site, and if you don't have time to participate in a scheduled program, you can pull it up on the computer and there'll be an instructor right there for you. Any other questions?
Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another report by Mr. Coning concerning traffic improvement.
Good evening, I'm Fred Coning, the traffic foreman for the city of Lafayette. You were provided an electronic copy of our annual report from 2015, and I'll just highlight a few areas that we're really proud of here. I think our proudest achievement for, or one of our proudest for 2015, was the installation of a speed bump with flashers on 26th Street at Gregory behind Alcoa. We had been fighting people running through the guardrail there, and the, several were hits and runs, so we were having to pay to repair the guardrail out of the street department budget, and Alcoa was actually getting ready to put concrete walls behind their fence, and since we put that speed bump in, we have not had one contact with the guardrail. So, we feel really good about that one. The rest of this from 2015, we added a couple more signals to our ATMS system, and we also were, we just finished up- were, we just finished up an inventory of all of the streetlights that the city actually owns and maintains that we do not depend on Duke to take care of. And I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 in areas like Veterans Memorial Parkway South, all of the decorative poles that we have down around downtown and on Twickenham Boulevard, there are a few and also the new Old Romney Road. And we look forward to this year, 2016, we'll be adding two more signalized intersections. We'll have signals go in on Green Bush Street at the entrance to Payless Supermarket and we'll relocate the entrance or the north entrance to Market Square to line up with that. And also, we're providing a signal at Veterans Memorial Parkway East and Fastline Road where for SIA to be able to get trucks across Veterans Memorial Parkway easier.
Would you repeat that last one?
It's on Veterans Memorial Parkway East and Fastline. Fastline is the one that runs back, there's the golf driving range, it's right there. But there, we needed to help SIA move trucks back and forth across Veterans Memorial Parkway East. We also will replace between 300 and 500 stop signs this coming year. They are 14 years old. That's way more than what we expected to get out of them. They were only warranted for five years and we were able to, obviously the manufacturers are afraid to warrant products too long, but the, we got 14 years out of them. I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I saw something on the news the other day about problems with signage, not in Lafayette, but in the county. Are you, are you finding any vandalism to signs in the city of Lafayette?
Nope. I think one time last fall, we had somebody run over two or three of them. It was out in one of the neighborhoods, they just, we knew that it was a, it had to be a pickup truck, that's all we could tell. They, we're used to having signs get run over anyway, so we're, but I have not had, in fact, I'll knock on wood, we don't have that much vandalism in the way of graffiti on our signs.
What about cooperation with the state in markings on highways? One of the councilmen, Mr. Downing, has a, apparently a problem and I can identify with it at Creasy and Road 26, where I think there's a two-lane turning area for going in both directions.
If I may interrupt.
Go with it.
It used to, you had a white line going around there. It used to be a yellow one and there's no lights at the intersection. Seven o'clock in the morning when it's dark or raining, it's really tough for the insider person. What happened to the yellow line, I guess would be my question. And then can we keep up with those lines on there? And I was told that we outsource some of that stuff now?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the bid process right now to have-
McCarty Lane is another one that, it needs a line down the middle. It's unbelievable and I just wondered about.
The last fall, we had a little bit, or a few of our, in fact, only one road painted before they ran out of good weather and that was McCarty Lane. And that was from Main Street all the way to Veterans Memorial Parkway East. But the skips that go through the intersection at South Street and Creasy that you're referring to, they are in the, in the bid package.
Will the yellow one come back?
Yes, the yellow one will come back and this year-
That really helps.
-we have decided to mill the road down to where the skips will be recessed so that they're not going to get, they will not get worn off as fast or get peeled up by, by the actual turning movement of the vehicles.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Coning?
Fred, that's why I'm over here. On 26th Street, that speed bump, it's breaking up on that as you're heading. Have you seen that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it going to be fixed or is it-
We'll do something. I have no idea what, what we'll do to get it patched because I think it got hit pretty hard by a-
Snowplow or something.
Yeah. I noticed the one on, down on Washington Street's got a big chunk out of it too. We'll-
But the one on 22nd Street doesn't seem to, I don't know what it is, if it's different material or different size.
It's, it's been an interesting process because the early speed bumps that went in back when Dave Heath was mayor, they, they were put in in a different manner and they were extremely difficult to get over. So we've tried to make it where, like the one at 26th Street is, has a six-foot wide deck and the approaches are three feet wide, so it's, and it's only four inches tall. It's designed to make it easier to go over but still slow the traffic down. I didn't remember one thing, one other thing that I wanted to make you aware of. All of the construction projects that are going on in town, we stay abreast as much as we possibly can of what's going on with the traffic. Where we have problems and you never know until it crops up. Like when we had to close Union and Sagamore for that short time, the traffic was backed up on Creasy all the way to Fortune Drive and we had no idea how that could be, the ripple effect would go that, that far out. But we, from now on, or from that point, we discovered that there are big ripple effects and we do everything we can to, to change the traffic flow or to accommodate any, any construction projects. So if your constituents say anything to you, tell them that you will contact me and I'll do everything I can to alleviate the problem.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Coning.
Thank you.
Reports of councilmen.
Yes, I have one thing I'd like to speak to. I was reading over the fire department's annual report and there was one page that was the ISO, the Insurance Services Office evaluates fire departments every three years for their readiness. Each fire department is assigned a classification and that classification directly relates to the cost of insurance for the citizens in that fire district. A department can receive a classification between one and 10. A classification of one signifies best prepared and 10, least prepared. A year ago, our department was classified as a three. This year, they were classified as a two. Out of the 40, about 49,000 fire departments that they classify, 2.5% get a one or a two rating. So because we went from a three to a two, this will lower insurance costs for all citizens in our department that our department provides services for. So thank you Lafayette Fire Department for all your hard work. We truly appreciate that. Thank you very much. Well, and here it says the Water Works received a classification of one and after everything that's happened in Flint, Michigan, it is very reassuring to all the citizens of Lafayette, our Water Works is rated the top. So thank you Water Works, too.
All right. Any other reports by councilmen? Council people, excuse me. Now it's time for public comment and I would, I will read this particular statement. "We welcome public comment and encourage active participation at this meeting. However, in order to proceed efficiently, public comment will be limited to two areas of this meeting. First, there will be an opportunity for public comment on ordinances or resolutions that are currently before the council. These comments should be limited to three minutes in length and be germane and relevant to the ordinance or resolution. All participants will be required to maintain a high level of stability, respect, and courtesy for everyone present. Any participant who, after being advised, persists or discourtes or hostile manner, which may disrupt the meeting, will be asked to leave and Mr. Downing will escort them out of here." So, please, come forward.
You just saw those notes, that's the reason you did that. Lloyd Wells, 3717 Rawlings Drive. "We provide a financial environment for new and expanding businesses in our, in our city to gain solid footing through formative years after initial building and after remodeling. We provide assistance for individuals stricken by acts of, acts of God or nature. Why? We realize the long-term benefits of tax relief for additional jobs provided to the area and the tax base that comes from those same things and the commerce that comes from the occupants of those, those homes. What we don't seem to realize is the total devastation that occurs when the much-needed repairs or infrastructure occurs. We have needed repairs on Sagamore Parkway for over 30 years, but it's been put off for numerous reasons over the, over the years. In a residential area, it's an inconvenience but little more. But in a commercial area, it can be totally devastating to those businesses that have put everything they own on the line and, by the way, provide hundreds of jobs just as well as those other businesses do that get help. Not only does it restrict the flow of traffic and the ability to reach some businesses, it is compounded when traffic gets rerouted from I-65 up Sagamore Parkway. There were times when, and I'm sure you realize it, that during the repairs on the I-65 bridge over the Wabash, it was unbearable. It took me over an hour to get from Sagamore or from DeFaul Chevrolet to US 26. Now, can you imagine the frustration of customers trying to reach these businesses? In my case, they must endure it because I'm the only one in town that provides the services I provide. But when other options are available, what do you think you'd do? You're going to take those other options. I did a survey of that area out there and in the survey, the percent of lost traffic and revenue in the area currently under construction, the results varied greatly, but the average reflected over 50% cut in income and traffic. That was a range of plus 9% for only one business and one business closed. What I learned from the survey, it's best to sell exotic lingerie in the area. That's the only thing that's showing the profit. I'm sorry, but I need to finish this, if you don't mind. Could you stand a 50% cut in pay for two-plus years? What happens to the businesses who must dismiss their experienced employees? The employees can sometimes find other employment, but the businesses easily can be forced into bankruptcy. I submit that a burden should be shared by those benefiting from the needed renovation, not just those who have invested in businesses there. The same scenario existed on Earl Avenue Project and took in a number of failed businesses there. Why does the city not value the jobs these businesses provide as much as the promised jobs of businesses seeking to locate here? Why does the city not understand that collectively, these businesses provide more jobs than any, than most of the promised jobs seeking to expand? The Sagamore Parkway project was to be a five-year endeavor. You are already experiencing a shift in traffic from Sagamore Parkway to Creasy Lane, to the extent that additional police presence is necessary in the area. That increased traffic represents lost traffic to the businesses along the proposed project of Sagamore Parkway. You have an opportunity to be positively, or to positively impact this problem by offering some tax relief to the businesses-
Mr. Wells, please draw your comments to a conclusion.
I'm there. To the, been there. I don't ask for myself, but I ask for the businesses in the, in the, in the, in the public area. What, if anything, are you going to do about it? Now, I will be back next month and I'll see if we've discussed it some, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed and the citizens of this town ought to hear some, some sort of an answer.
Thank you. Any other comments by members of the audience? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cheryl Chapman. I reside at 1408 Howell Street. I'm, I come before you this evening because of what has come to my home, microchips. Microchips are used for identification purpose. This should be an option for responsible pet owners within the holding period, not mandatory. Mandatory microchipping is depriving the property owner's rights of their personal property and of their faith-based beliefs. There are potential health risks associated with injecting foreign objects as a microchip into any animal. Documented side effects of cancer, side effects of cancer, neurological issues, and migration are known to have occurred. The point is, it does happen and experts do not know why. It's the right of our pet, it's the right of pet owners to decide whether the pet is to be microchipped. To my understanding, pet owners are not giving, given any disclaimer regarding the side effects known, any research data to even make an informed decision. Sellers and promoters of the microchip give pet owners incorrect information or no information at all. Researchers and veterinarians do not know why some breeds become afflicted and why others do not. Why some affect females and not males of any, of any one breed or why the microchips migrate. Why, if injected in the wrong site, the chip has shown to cause lifetime neurological issues and some death due to migration. Microchipping is good until your pet is diagnosed with cancer, neurological problems, or death. Microchips potentially could result in life-threatening consequences. Responsible pet owners should not be joined, treated, or charged as irresponsible pet owners. Laws are supposed to be created to be fair and equitable. Does the penalty of mandatory microchipping fit the crime for responsible pet owners? The real issue here is irresponsible pet owners. Occasionally, the responsible pet owner's pets inadvertently become at-large or stray. This may not make, this does not make irresponsible, this does not make them irresponsible and does not clearly suggest mandatory microchip if the pets do not already have one. Why would you microchip, spay, or neuter an animal before you have confirmation of owner notification and release or adoption if the final decision is to euthanize? Waste of money and time. Lafayette Municipal Code as written, dogs at large that are picked up, taken to the shelter if not wearing identification tags are to be scanned. Four-to-five-day hold placed on the animal for the purpose of notifying every pet owner. Not immediate microchip. The current ordinance is an effective tool, as long as it's conformed properly. Based on current research, there is no known data or conclusion why the implant of microchips are a potential health, health risk of malignant tumors. May I? I'm almost done.
A minute.
Malignant tumors, neurological effects or death. Why the malignant tumor's growth surrounds and fully encases the chip. Tumors have metastasized- Tumors have metastasized or spread to other parts of the animal, if it is not, or if they don't even know why the microchip migrates. Therefore, being of, because of this knowledge that I have and my faith, I would not be a good steward for the care and well-being of my pet should I accept incomplete research data as fact and not what it truly is, which is opinion. You make the decision to take the advice from your medical doctors for medication. Doctors explain the side effects and/or multitude of side effects. Wouldn't you consider asking for an alternative? As responsible pet owners, why would, why would this not be appropriate? But first, in order for an owner to make the informed decision, the information must be given. I'm requesting an acknowledgement and action from this council regarding the issue of faith-based concerns, potential health risk concerns of our pets based on the incomplete research data, and the four-to-five-day hold, that the four-to-five-day hold remains in effect. Having the holding period without altering the personal property of the pet owner takes care of the faith-based issues. Lastly, all scanners are not created equal. Scanners do not detect all chips, not even the universal scanners being used. Animals are also getting implanted twice because the chip was not detected by the scanner or owners were not told that their pet that they had just purchased was microchipped. Pets are also at risk of being euthanized if the chip is not detected once the holding period expires and they're not adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address this? Any subject? Excuse me. It's Jermaine.
Perry Barbie, 3700 Rudbud Avenue. I keep mine short. And with the summer and spring coming along about, I, first of all, I'd like to say the fall, the opening the John T. Myers Bridge again looks great, except for the paint job on it. No, it don't look very good either. Other than that, it looks great. Another, I know is coming up, the Clean Sweep.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. And I think I'm off that weekend. I encourage everybody to get, do part of that, because it's really great to help clean up the community. There's something else I really want to say. The Parks Director already said that, and I'm going to say it again. I am really excited and thrilled that we have the Lafayette Aviators come to town, and like she said, the first game's going to be Wednesday, June 1st, and I encourage everybody that can, that knows about it, please come to the ballpark that night and any night of the summer, there's going to be thirty games, I think, at Loeb Stadium. And have you heard any more about our little thing for the, on the vehicles yet? Have you, for the police vehicles? That we talked about in December? Okay. Y'all have a great week.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Heidi?
I move to adjourn, Mr. Campbell.
Okay.
All the players sing the publishing. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All.